Councilmember Remi, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My senior Cody is here with us this evening, thank you.
Let us pray. We come in prayer to you tonight, Lord God, on behalf of the members of Columbus City Council. They seek your wisdom and guidance in their decisions affecting the citizens of our great city. On the eve of primary election day, we ask you to guide the voters so that the best women and men will be chosen to represent their party in the upcoming November election. There are also issues that face the voters. May whatever is best for the citizenry be determined in this election, and may we always work for good government, justice, peace, and mutual charity for one another today and in the days to come. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, my senior. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of City Council chambers, reserves, city officials, or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
Second.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Brown Page, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communication received by the City Clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read in the record?
None at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of Council? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight I have two resolutions this evening. First, I would ask Commander Robert Meter, Mr. Steve Sutton, and Nate and Sarah Caulfield to please approach the podium. Resolution 0136X2018 to declare the week of May 9 through the 16th, 2018, Light Central Ohio Blue Week, whereas in honor of our men and women in uniform, downtown Columbus has come together to light Central Ohio Blue from May 9 through May 16, 2018, whereas every day over 1,900 officers of the Columbus Division of Police face the challenge of keeping every Columbus neighborhood safe, whereas the members of the Columbus Division of Police perform their duty under the direction of core values professionalism, respect, integrity, discipline, enthusiasm, sense of urgency and attention to detail, and whereas Light Central Ohio Blue is an opportunity to remember those law enforcement officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And whereas in 2016, Mr. William Swank began this campaign to honor our first responders in our Columbus community, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby declare May 9 through the 16th, 2018, as Light Central Ohio Blue Week and expresses its gratitude to the women and men of the Columbus Division of Police and all law enforcement officers for their service to the City of Columbus, I move for adoption.
Brown Page, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Do any of my colleagues have any comments? Hearing none, Commander Meter, the floor is yours, sir.
Councilman Brown, thank you, President Harden. Councilmembers, thank you for this wonderful opportunity. On the early morning of February 10 of 2018, Bill Swank, the co-founder of Light Central Ohio Blue, sent out an email to all the participating members last year reminding them of the upcoming event that we have starting this week. A few hours later, he sent out a second email asking Central Ohio to light Central Ohio Blue because at 11:30 that morning, two Westerville officers were shot and killed. This campaign of lighting Central Ohio Blue, lighting the state of Ohio, and lighting America Blue is to show support for law enforcement, and the irony of that is not missed by anybody. Although this campaign is about representing in part the fallen officers, and in part, my brother-in-law was shot and killed in 1993 as a Columbus police officer, but this is also to support all the officers that are out there day in and day out in Central Ohio, in the city of Columbus, and throughout America, and for that, I am ultimately grateful to all of you for recognizing this. What this campaign is, we're asking businesses and residences to place a blue light bulb outside of their building, outside their residence, from May 9 through May 16. With me here today is Steve Sutton. Steve is the owner of the Central Ohio Batteries and Bulbs and has donated thousands of blue light bulbs throughout Central Ohio just out of his own generosity. The campaign itself takes in no money, this is just a grassroots organization, and so, Steve, on behalf of everyone, I say thank you for what you've done. Also with me is dispatcher Nate Caulfield and his wife Sarah, who are very instrumental in the campaign. Sarah actually has run our website, and Nate, he does drones and does filming and helps add to the website. So I have, for each of the council members, I have a poster, I have a bulb on behalf of Steve, and a coin on behalf of Light Central Ohio Blue, so I'm not sure how I'm supposed to hand those out, if I just hand them out, or someone's going to come get them, but here. So Council, thank you again for this wonderful opportunity. I do believe that even being here in Central Ohio and being a true Buckeye fan, for one, for one week, we can say, "Go Blue." So, thank you very much.
Before you go, Robert, Councilman Page.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Just a quick question, could you let everyone know the website, and also, how do they actually get the light bulbs?
Okay. There's LightCentralOhioBlue.org is the website, and there's also a Facebook, and there's Twitter, which is hashtag LCOB. As far as the light bulbs, they have been handed out through different people that we received them from, from Steve Sutton. So, thank you.
Mr. Sutton, would you have any comments you want to make, sir, before you actually...
Thank you, Councilman. We're also participating in, our retail stores are handing out free light bulbs to anyone that comes into our store as well, and so we're trying to participate that way, as well as giving some bulbs to the community liaison officers as well, so that they can hand them out in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stenziano, you have some comments? If not, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. They said they didn't want to say anything, so I wasn't trying to cut them off.
Also, President Harden, I have a second resolution. I don't know if Lieutenant David Sawyer was able to make it this evening, but also, Resolution 013X2018 is to declare the week of May 6 through 12, 2018, Arson Prevention Week in Columbus, Ohio. Whereas each year for National Arson Awareness Week, the U.S. Fire Administration gathers and shares information to raise awareness of arson or youth fire setting and provide individuals with strategies to combat these problems in their community. And whereas the theme of this year's Arson Awareness Week is Preventing Arson in Houses of Worship. And whereas each year from 2013 to 2015, an estimated 23,800 vacant building fires were reported to fire departments within the United States and caused an estimated 75 deaths, 200 injuries, and over $785 million in property loss. And whereas from 2011 to 2015, an estimated average of 3,310 firefighters were injured per year by vacant building fires, 13% of the firefighter injuries at structure fires occur in or at vacant buildings. Whereas, we will use the week of May 6 through the 12 to focus on the importance of cooperative effort with fire and emergency services departments, law enforcement, public works, and insurance companies to help prevent the horrendous crime of arson at vacant and abandoned buildings, and be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby declare May 6 through the 12, 2018, an Arson Awareness Week, and encourages all citizens to learn more about the immense toll arson takes on our community. With the steps that they can take to help prevent it, then all they have to do is contact our Columbus Fire Division, and they will give you all the instructions and help you may need. Thank you. In his absence, I will make sure that the Fire Division gets the award. Also, I have one last announcement, if I may, President Harden.
Please.
And that is Aspen Dental Mouth Mobile, a 42-foot dentist's office on wheels, is coming to Columbus on May 15 to provide free care to local veterans and part of this year's 30-stop cross-country tour. Dentists and their teams from area Aspen dental practices are volunteering their services for this event. The Mouth Mobile Unit is handicap accessible, fully equipped with two surgical suites, digital x-rays, and a denture laboratory. Services will be provided on Tuesday, May 15, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 341 Rush Alley, the parking lot near Cosi. Call 614-230-0662, option 2, and request to speak to Dixie, and she will schedule an appointment for any veteran. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
That's all I have this evening.
Councilman, would you like to adopt the resolution this evening? Would you like to adopt the resolution this evening?
Yes, I move for adoption. For the, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Remi.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight I have an announcement and two resolutions. I'd like to remind everyone that this week is Public Service Recognition Week. During the first full week of May since 1985, we joined together to honor and recognize the millions of federal, state, county, and local employees and military personnel who have dedicated themselves and their careers to serving the general public. Please be sure and make time this week and throughout the year to say thank you to the public servants you know or meet, and to appreciate the important services they deliver on behalf of the community every day. On behalf of the City of Columbus and Columbus City Council, we thank you for your service. Next, I would like to invite Ms. Millie Fiesel, Suzie Allen, John Zettler and the Zettler family to the podium, as I introduce Resolution 0135X2018. This resolution is to recognize and celebrate Ms. Mildred Millie Fiesel for her dedication to working, living life, and being a continuous staple in her community at the age of 99 years young. Ms. Mildred Millie Fiesel began her journey with Zettler Hardware in the 1950s by providing assistance to Mrs. Zettler with various tasks around the store. Millie is now celebrating over 50 years and counting to Zettler Hardware in southwest Columbus. Born on January 15, 1919, and at 99 years young, Millie continues to work 20 hours a week, Monday through Friday, at Zettler Hardware. The Zettler family business was founded in 1844 by Louis Zettler as a meatpacking company and grocery store. Louis opened the first Zettler Hardware location in 1886, and it has stayed in the family ever since. Multiple Zettler Hardware locations are now owned by John Zettler, his son, and his three daughters. Working tirelessly, Millie is an inspiration to all ages and constant reminder to always work hard and to do what makes you happy. We also would like to recognize her children, Suzie Allen and Jack Fiesel, who couldn't be here this evening, and the Zettler family for their endless support of Millie's goals and efforts. John, I'd like to offer the floor to you.
Thank you, President Harden and councilmembers. It's quite an honor that you bestow on us, and we're very happy. What I was going to say, you've probably covered most of it, but I will tell you one or two things about Mildred. When Mildred started to work for us to complete a sale, you had to crank the register. Today, Mildred uses a computer touchscreen to complete her sales. And like you said, Mildred is still working 20 hours a week. She's the first one at the store at 8:00 a.m. waiting for the manager to open the store. Mildred is very knowledgeable about hardware, she gets along with people very well, she probably is better known in the South End than anyone that lives there, and I want to thank Mildred for the 60-plus years of service. And Zettler Hardware is extremely happy that you could be with us for that long. Thank you very much, Mildred.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zettler. Suzie, would you like to say anything? Are you... Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't hear well.
All right. Are there any questions for my colleagues this evening? If not, I move for adoption. Pardon?
Councilmember Remi, thank you for bringing this resolution to Columbus City Council. It's pretty amazing that someone who is still going to work each and every day at the age of 99 years old and working 20 hours a week. So when you think about President Pro Tim Stenziano's age-friendly program certainly shows that individuals are certainly living longer and continuing to give, not only to your store, but to this community. And just want to say, congratulations to her, and thank you for her family that's here too. Just congratulations, and certainly something many people aspire to be doing, I think, to be working at 99. Not saying it's me, but others may be. But I think that's pretty amazing, and just congratulations, congratulations. Thank you.
Brown Page, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, I would like to invite Ann Woodford and Tiffany Richards to the podium, as I introduce Resolution 0141X2018 to honor and recognize May 2018 as National Foster Care Month. In May 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed the first national foster care month in the United States. The original focus was to give foster parents the recognition they deserve for opening their homes to foster children in need and providing them with care. It was also very imperative that we, as a community, increase emphasis on prevention and reunification services, as these programs reduce the number of children that are forced to remain in the foster care system. The City of Columbus appreciates the tireless work of all foster parents and urged those interested in learning more about fostering to consider becoming a foster parent as soon as possible. With many children in need of a safe and loving home, Columbus City Council thanks all of the foster families who have, and continues to answer, the call of service. Ann and Tiffany, the floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Council President Harden, and thank you, councilmembers, for having us here, just to recognize Foster Care Month. My name's Tiffany Richards, I am the director of the Bear Foundation. We are a faith-based foster care agency. We were founded in 1967. We have offices in nine states, including here in Ohio. Here at our Columbus office, we service Franklin and the surrounding counties. Our main mission is to provide safe, stable, loving homes, not as a replacement to biological families, but to provide a bridge, support while biological families who have been struggling or who have stumbled upon situations that have led to the abuse or neglect of children, to just have a time to work with custodial agencies, work with them and partner with them on their reunification plans, in hopes that we can provide a therapeutic environment for their children in the meantime, as biological parents are working to have their children returned to them. So we like to feel that we're working alongside biofamilies while they're becoming strengthened and just getting their needs met, so that children can return home to their families where they should be. In the meantime, we kind of have a dual role. We provide support and coaching and training to families all through the City of Columbus who have answered the call, as we like to call it, we do believe foster parenting is a calling, and equipping them to be able to temporarily parent some of your more difficult children who have suffered severe traumatic events. So providing them with that support, and then also really making sure that we're creating an environment for children to thrive and to flourish again while their biological families are preparing for their return. We service youth ages 0 to 18, but now with the recent passing of House Bill 50 and the new implementation of the Bridges Program, we have taken on a new exciting task of providing services for transitioning young adults ages 18 to 21. So now, we're helping them kind of transition into society and just linking them with independent living services. We are just really glad to be here tonight, just to bring awareness, just to the mission and the call of foster care, and just to communicate the great need that we have every day for just families who are willing to open their home and provide support for these children that are in need. Right now, our greatest need definitely would be your older children. You know, they're the ones that don't necessarily receive the support, or those are the ones that families aren't necessarily banging down our doors to foster or to care for. Sibling groups for sure, especially with the opioid crisis that we're suffering from. We're getting a lot of, not only young babies who are testing positive for opioid, but we're also having the siblings of those babies coming into care. So families who are willing to open their homes to a larger amount of children. So the need is great, there's always a continual need. So again, I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to come here and just bring awareness to foster care and to celebrate National Foster Care Month. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ann Woodford. I'm the director of Buckeye Ranch. I'm a little nervous going after Mrs. Zettler. That's quite an accomplishment. I guess I would piggyback on what was previously stated. We, at the Buckeye Ranch, we serve 282 kids a day, and that sounds like a high number of children who've experienced abuse and neglect, until I tell you that we turn away 50% of the kids that are referred to us because we don't have families. So take a minute and ponder that for a second. We have three locations, one here in Central Ohio, we serve Licking County, we have an office there, and an office in Hamilton County as well. And I personally love this month because it serves, you know, it's aligned with my passion, and my passion are to heal families, heal communities, and I believe in foster care. Oftentimes, we think about acknowledging social workers, police officers, things like that, but I think that we fail to acknowledge the everyday people. And a lot of times, those are the people who are making the difference and strengthening our communities by helping children who've had very traumatic life experiences. And so this month for me is important because it's a chance to say, hey, you know, everybody asks me about giving money, about giving donations, but sometimes I say, what would you think of giving of yourself and your home? And that's really what National Foster Care Month is about, is acknowledging people who have opened their home and who have chosen to take a child that they may or may not know. And not only that, but take on some of the challenges that that child presents. And so this is an amazing month for us at the Buckeye Ranch. You'll see a lot of social media activity around this month. It's also a chance for us to say, you know, do you know someone in your community? Are you a person who has a passion for a child? Can you make a difference? Can you be patient? Can you be kind? Can you take on the challenges that another child is going to bring into your life? So I just want to thank you for having us here and recognizing National Foster Care Month, and if you know someone, please feel free to call the Bear Foundation or the Buckeye Ranch, because as stated, you know, the opioid crisis has, I can't say it enough, how it has impacted our community, I can't say enough how it has impacted our state, and as those numbers grow, child welfare numbers grow. Every day, more kids are entering our system, either because they have their own opioid use issue, or because their family is experiencing an opioid crisis, or because their parent just passed away while they were in the car with them, in a restaurant with them. So if you know someone, or you, you know, are listening to this, you know, please consider becoming a foster parent, please consider making the difference for a child, because, you know, our community needs it. We all, we need it. We need children to be strong, to make our community stronger. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Councilmember Tyson.
If someone in the viewing and listening audience wanted to become a foster parent, what would they need to do?
I can tell you that you can go to, if you go to Franklin County Children's Services website, there is, if you just Google Franklin County Children's Services, there's a list of every agency here in Central Ohio, as well as across the state, and they'll give you detailed information about those agencies, and it will tell you exactly, you can click on them, and it'll take you to ample websites that can provide you information. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great question.
Councilmember Page.
Thank you, Councilmember Remi. Are there any additional trainings offered for parents when they are taking in, or foster parents, when they are taking in young people who are victims of the opioid crisis? Like, how can we encourage individuals to deal with those children?
In general, foster parents, they have to go through a lot of training. So they have prospective foster parent training, which, you know, you would call pre-service training. They have to receive 36 hours of training. And then, once they've become licensed, kind of continuing education training for foster parents. And so we're always trying to find specialized training for all the specific needs, trauma, and, as you stated, the opioid crisis. So there's always trainings being held at the regional training center through Franklin County and just around Ohio. So we're always making sure our foster parents, anyone who's interested, receives ample training, coaching, to really answer the call for these children.
And I also, if I may, I would say that Nationwide Children's Hospital, they know that the need is great, and so if we have a child in the hospital who needs to come in foster care, they will spend ample time teaching you exactly what that child needs for their mental health care and their physical health care. So we can, if anyone were to be interested, we could get you all the resources you need.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Councilmember Remi. You mentioned the legislation. Can you talk about the impact that's had and where that has created a greater need or maybe an unknown need, because it has increased the age for young folks to remain in foster care?
I definitely think it answered, or we're seeking to answer, the solution of just how our children are being discharged from the system and having absolutely no support. And when you think about youth who have experienced trauma developmentally, they're not at an age or a state where they're truly able to care for themselves and be on their own. So I really think this has provided an amazing opportunity to stand alongside young adults. And why I say stand aside them is because, you know, they've been through the child welfare system, some of them their whole lives. They're ready to get out and be adults and live their lives, and so we more so align with them versus telling them what to do or being their caseworker. And we really just help them with next step life planning. So it's really been great. It has expanded the need, however, the Bridges Program has provided the resources. So, thank you.
And it's been, I'd like to also add, if I may, it's a great opportunity because kids previously were couch surfing or experiencing homelessness, and one of the things that Bridges has allowed us to do is to stop those kids who are going from couch to couch to couch and really have a chance to identify what they need. And it provides a lot of creative housing opportunities for them, either to stay with foster families, or they can go to independent living settings. And so I'm interested, I know the date is out early, it's early telling, but we are optimistic here in Ohio that we're going to have less kids who are going to homelessness and even early incarceration, and there's some research that supports that we'll be able to delay teen pregnancy. So we are very excited about that.
All right. Thank you very much. No other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remi Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have this evening, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Remi. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. I do have an announcement this evening. The City of Columbus will host its first career fair this Saturday, May 12, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. The career fair will take place at the Columbus State Conference Center located at 315 Cleveland Avenue. This will be a great opportunity for all city departments to recruit for open positions and showcase why working for the city of Columbus is so awesome. Job seekers will have the opportunity to interface with department representatives, complete NeoGov profiles, and attend professional development sessions facilitated by our citywide training team. They will also have the opportunity to sit in on a police officer or firefighter info session to learn more about joining two of the best safety forces in the nation. A resume lab will be open to attendees during the fair, so stop by any time between 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to get one-on-one help with creating a resume that distinguishes you from the rest. A testing clinic will also be available to provide insight on various civil service exams, and again, stop by between 10:00 to 2:00. And I'd also like to encourage any city employees to volunteer for this career fair. We need about fifteen to twenty volunteers from 8:15 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. So, if you are interested, please reach out to the Office of Diversity and Inclusion to let them know your interest. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, and thank you to the Department of, to ODI and your support for that event. Really looking forward to it. President Protem Stenziano.
Thank you, President Harden. At this time, I'd like to invite Momentum Executive Director LeAnn Eagle and founder Monica Kreidler, as well as Momentum dancers to the podium as they introduce Resolution 0138-X-2018 to celebrate the fifteenth anniversary of Momentum and encourage Columbus residents to participate in Momentum Week and experience the power of the performance arts. First, I want to thank the young people. I know you had to sit there and be patient with us, and I know for somebody it was the first time you've been to a council meeting, so great job there. Momentum, a nonprofit organization, is run by highly trained artists and musicians, engages children in central Ohio in dance, music, and performance in order to develop lifelong habits of self-confidence, discipline, perseverance, and excellence. Approximately 1,000 students participate in the cost-free 30-week program, which holds classes during the school day, with the program culminating in a grand year-end performance at the Davidson Theater in downtown Columbus to celebrate the students' year-long achievements with family, friends, and community members. Since the program was created 15 years ago, over 8,000 children have participated in Momentum, teaching students the importance of the arts at a young age and encourages creativity and free spiritedness among the youth regarding, regardless of background. I'd like to mention that Momentum's grand year-end performance is going to be taking place this week on May 9th and May 11th at the downtown's Davidson Theater, and will feature boys and girls throughout central Ohio. The performances are at 10:30 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. both days and are free and open to the public. We're going to be treated to a brief performance, so before we do that, I'm going to move for adoption.
Second. Brown, Page, Rimi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And Director Eagle and Ms. Kreidler, the podium is yours, and we look forward to you sharing how excellent Momentum is.
Thank you. Thank you, President Harden, President Protem Stenziano, council members, thank you. My name is Monica Kreidler, and I had the good fortune of starting Momentum 15 years ago, and I did that because I knew that dance, music, and performance would have a unique way of inspiring children to strive for excellence. So, my first year doing this, I worked with 150 children, and as you mentioned, President Protem Stenziano, we now work with 8,000, we have worked with 8,000 children since its inception. Momentum is a nonprofit organization, and our success is due in large part to the generosity of individual donors, corporate donors, local foundations, and government entities. Demand for our programs is at an all-time high, and we're anxious to grow and are poised to do so with the help of our new executive director, LeAnn Eagle.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you, members of council. It is my pleasure to be joined today by seven of our advanced team dancers. They've been with Momentum anywhere from three to four years with us. They started in our school-based program, and they, these are seven of our children. We actually have over 100 that make up our advanced team. And as you mentioned, our performances, our grand performances, will be this Wednesday and Friday at the Davidson Theater, and these seven dancers will be joined by 1,000 central Ohio boys and girls that will perform, and most of those are with us through our 30-week school-based program. And so, we hope that you will all join us for the performances. They are free, and I promise you, if you attend those performances, you will be inspired and so optimistic for the futures of these children and the other 1,000 boys and girls. So, without further ado, enough talking, let's get to the dancing. And so, I will now turn it over to our dancers.
All right. So, dancers, let's show everyone the big four, which are our guiding principles. Five, six, ready, go!
Do my best. Work hard. Never give up. Be healthy. More than natural, love team.
Good job! So, that's just a super quick snapshot of our year-end performance that we do hope you will all have a chance to attend. Only take 55 minutes, so come on over.
Thank you all. No pressure on the directors and departments to up their game at council meetings. Thank you. That was terrific. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you to Monica. Congratulations on 15 years of serving our young people in our community. Arts is always so important. It is important because it can really change the trajectory of a young person's life because they will, they see that they are accomplishing something, and that will help them do better in school. I know that you know that. Thank you, LeAnn. I know you're in a new role, and glad you accepted the role to be as the executive director there. But also, to the young people, thank you for being here and performing before us. It is, we're so proud of you. We look forward to seeing your performance. I've had the opportunity to see a number of the performances, and they are absolutely amazing. So, thank you, Monica. And could you let the young people come up and say their names, so if their parents can see them? And what school do they attend?
My name is Diageon A. Powell. I attend Grofford Madison Middle School South.
My name is Chukwun Murray. I attend Kid Columbus Middle School.
My name is Niaja Island, and I attend Arts Impact Middle School.
My name is Naby B. Qualls, and I attend Tree of Life Christian Schools.
My name is Isaiah Reynolds, and I attend, I attend Tharp-Halyard Sixth Grade School.
My name is Lisa Reynolds, and I attend Halyard-Tharp Sixth Grade School.
So, again, thank you all. Look forward to the performances. I know it's a big week, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. I have one resolution this evening. I'm going to ask for Lisa Pratt-McDaniel to walk towards the podium. I don't know, Ms. Gamble, are you coming to the podium? And this resolution is 0142-X-2018, and it is to recognize May the 7th through the May 11th of 2018 as the In-Demand Jobs Week in the city of Columbus. Whereas, a thriving local economy is driven by workforce development leaders who have an awareness regarding the impact of emerging technologies and the vast changes in the skill levels that are needed by tomorrow's workers. It is also important for leaders to identify and predict the skills gaps that exist among the workers and the need for workers to learn to be flexible, adaptable, and ready to acquire new knowledge and skills in real time. And whereas, May 7th through the 11th will be recognized as In-Demand Jobs Week in the state of Ohio, marking the first observation of this initiative. This is the, this is being conducted in conjunction with the Ohio Department of Education, the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, businesses, state agencies, and the Ohio Department of Higher Education promoting in-demand jobs. And now, I am going to ask for the adoption, and then, I'm going to allow the president and CEO of the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio to share more about the importance of In-Demand Jobs Week. I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Rimi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you.
Council President Harden, Councilmember Tyson, and the rest of members of council, thank you so much for having us up here to recognize In-Demand Job Week. The Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio is pleased to be promoting the state's In-Demand Jobs Week this week. It's going to be a very busy week for us. We intend to promote this by three different events this week so that we can expose families here in the city and the county to jobs that have career paths and will allow for family-sustaining wages. Two of those events will be in the city of Columbus on Wednesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, will be at Fort Hayes, and on Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock will be at the North YMCA. All of these events will feature companies who are in the fields of manufacturing, healthcare, and information technology, as well as some others. We will have a giant life game for our children to play so they can figure out how much money they need to make to support the fabulous lifestyles they all want to have. And we'll also have our Jobs Mobile there so that we can also introduce to the parents the types of services that our Ohio Means Job Center offers. It's also our opportunity to kick off our initiative that we'll be doing this summer called Jobs Mobile on the Go, where the Jobs Mobile on Wednesdays will be at different libraries around the city and the county to be available, to show people the types of services, the types of jobs that are available, and what we can do to help them achieve what they want to do. Thank you for also for inviting Carisha Gamble. She's our Director of Outreach and Marketing, and I want to say these are going to be fantastically successful events, but it won't be because of me, it'll be because of my staff, like Carisha for sure. So, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to share this information and for your partnership in this resolution.
And again, Lisa, I am very thankful because we've been, I think it's so important for our parents to know the jobs of the future, and they can make sure that their children are getting those skill sets so that they will be able to get the skills that they need to be able to have those jobs. And then, Columbus, of course, will continue to grow because we will be a place where we will have employees ready to go to work with our employers. So, I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Are there any comments by the elected officials? Our city auditor, I see that the judge is here this evening. Any comments? Awesome. We have the Hilltop Area Commission is here, as well as Milo Grogan. Welcome, welcome to council this evening. Are there any other requests by members of council, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Page, Rimi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 1,011-36-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1201-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1040 and 1086-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee ordinance is 1144, 1205, and 1213-2018. Technology Committee ordinance 1092 and 1107-2018. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 967, 1113, 1127-2018. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance is 1116, 1117, 1118, and 1328-2018.
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 139-X, 140-X, 144, and 143-X-2018. Finance Committee ordinance is 418, 946, 958, 974, 994, 1025, 1050, 1055, 1065, 1089, 1093, 1148, 1168, 1204-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1033, 1035, 1036, 1080, 1085, 1141-2018. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 957, 1030, 1114, 1166-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 124-X-2018, ordinance is 933, 1044, 1047, 1145, and 1157-2018. Administration Committee ordinance is 334, 1154, 1155, 1255-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee ordinance is 976, 1098, 1099, 1108, 1109, 1242, 1243-2018. Housing Committee ordinance is 1018, 1094, 1095, 1096, 1097, 1151, 1152-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance is 1188 and 1210-2018. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 674, 698, 907, 921, 947, 949, 950, 960, 1004, 1037, and 1067-2018. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1019, 1021, 1027, 1029-2018. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, 113, 114, 115, 116, 117, 118, 119, 120, 121, 123, 124, and 125-2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening. Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins is here to speak on ordinance 1151, and it's in the Housing Committee. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. I just want to know what's going to be done to property, and how long it's been holding the land bank on speaking on 1151-2018 for it, but I just need to be more clarification on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director, would you follow up with Mr. Wilkins on the specifics? The House's 1061 Gears Avenue wants to know what's going to happen in the land bank. Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of these items designated as consent actions? Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brown, Page, Rimi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
The consent agenda is passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Rimi is chairing in stead of Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Rimi, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight, we have ordinance number 1058-2018 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to execute those documents necessary to acquire fee simple title and lesser interest to real property identified as Franklin County Tax Parcells 150-000411, 150-000820, 150-000821, and 150-000683 located on Lockborn Road, Lockborn, Ohio, to authorize the city auditor a transfer in expenditure of up to $3,600,000 within the Water Geo Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions and comments or comments from my colleagues? If not, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Rimi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much. Our second ordinance tonight in finances, ordinance number 1133-2018, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase business and enterprise class services, television services, phone services, and data services with Charter Communications Holdings, LLC, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from the general fund to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? If not, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Rimi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much, and that's all we have in finance this evening.
Thank you, Chair Rimi. The next committee to come before council is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember Page is chairing in her stead. Councilmember Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 0996-2018 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept- of Recreation and Parks to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Education in the amount of $2,500,000 for the 2018 Summer Food Program, to authorize the appropriation of $2,500,000 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 2283, to enter into an agreement with Columbus City Schools in the amount of $2,300,000 for the preparation and delivery of meals for their summer food program, to authorize the expenditure of $2,300,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 2283, and to declare an emergency. The Summer Food Service Program is administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture through the Ohio Department of Education. The program provides nutritionally balanced breakfast, lunches, and snacks to qualified children in need during the summer months. The program will serve approximately 195,000 breakfast meals, 340,000 lunch meals, and 95,000 snacks. Thousands of children will be served through this program at 240 sites throughout the greater Columbus area. Are there any additional comments from the department? Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 1034-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract for hosted software maintenance in support of the ActiveNet software application with the Active Network LLC, to authorize the expenditure of $105,000 from the Recreation and Parks Department Operating Fund, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of city code, and to declare an emergency. Currently, the Recreation and Parks Department utilizes ActiveNet software applications that assist with the automation of the department's business and management operations. The system centralizes all data and provides around-the-clock access for citizens to register for activities and facility rentals via the Internet and much more. Passage of this legislation will authorize the Director to enter into contract with Active Network LLC for the period of June 1, 2018, through May 31, 2019. Additional one-year terms are subject to authorization and appropriation by council. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all we have in Recreation and Parks this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Mitch Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 1090-2018 to authorize the transfer of funds within the Division of Police's General Fund Budget, and to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations within the ordinance to Galls RT2 LLC for the purchase of uniforms and accessories for the Division of Police from existing universal term contracts, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,301,987 from the general fund budget. If there are no questions, I move for passage. This legislation is for the uniforms and accessories for all our new cadets who will be coming on Columbus Police Division.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Remy is chair. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Good evening again, President Harden.
Good evening.
Tonight, I have ordinance number 1206-2018 to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and within the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley &amp; Sands, Inc. for the roadway Nationwide Boulevard and Hocking Street project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,699,838 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,549,757.90 from the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund for the project, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much, and with your permission, I'll move right into Environment Committee. Thank you very much. In Environment this evening, we have ordinance number 1041-2018 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders and associate relevant purchase agreements with multiple vendors for the purchase of refuse collection containers per the terms and conditions of citywide contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $1,130,585 or so, much thereof as may be needed from the Division of Refuse Collections Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions for my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Economic Development and Small Business, we have ordinance 1046-2018 to authorize the Director of Development to amend the Third Avenue and Olandangie River Road Tax Increment Financing Agreement with NRI Equity Land Investments, LLC, by entering into a Third Amendment to the Tax Increment Financing Agreement and to declare an emergency. Council passed ordinance 1301-2010 on October 4, 2010, establishing a tax increment financing TIF area benefiting parcels near Third Avenue and Olandangie River Road pursuant to Section 5709.40b of the Ohio Revised Code. The city and the developer now desire to amend the Tax Increment Financing Agreement by entering into a Third Amendment to the Tax Increment Financing Agreement substantially in the form on file with the Director of Development to clarify project financing. This ordinance will authorize the Director to execute this agreement. Director, do you have any additional comments?
No, thank you for the opportunity, though.
Thank you. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 1105-2018 to create a tax increment financing area on certain parcels of real property in the area of the White Castle Headquarters, to declare improvements to those parcels to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, to repeal ordinance number 1841-2017, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Development is proposing the establishment of a tax increment financing TIF in the area of the White Castle Headquarters at 555 West Goodell Street. The attached ordinance establishes that the TIF provides for a 100% exemption from real property taxation on all non-residential development on the TIF parcels for a period of not more than 30 years. The Columbus City School District will receive in the same manner as usual all amounts that it would have received in real property taxes had the tax exemption not been granted. Annual service payments in lieu of taxes will be made with respect to new private non-residential development on the TIF parcels. Are there any additional comments from the department? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. If I may move on to Judiciary and Court Administration?
Please.
Ordinance 1223-2018 to authorize an appropriation to the Municipal Court Clerk within the Job Growth Sub-Fund in support of the expedited record service program, and to declare an emergency. This is an exciting new pilot program, and I would like to ask Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk Lori Tyack to come up to the podium. This third-party expungement program is a pilot program in collaboration with the court in order to help individuals with issues faced by indigent defendants. Clerk Tyack, welcome to council this evening, and please provide more information on this program.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Page. Good evening, President Harden, President Protem Stenziano, council members Jaisa Page, Mitchell Brown, Emmanuel Remy, and Priscilla Tyson, and all the staff. Also, hello, auditor. How are you? I don't think anybody can see you from here. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address council for this special appropriation request. It's an unfortunate reality that a record number of individuals in our community are hindered from obtaining employment or adequate housing due to their background checks. The funds requested to go will go to those who are most in need of assistance. The program will allow them to participate in a pilot program to remove criminal records from private databases, websites, and publications to improve their quality of life prospects. I became aware of the electronic notification pilot program between the Ohio Attorney General and a private vendor in February of this year. House Bill 49, which was passed in 2017, authorized the Ohio Attorney General to contract with a private vendor to send electronic notification to more than 600 background-check companies in Ohio. And that occurs only after the court has approved the application for expungement or record sealing. Our first application was received on March 5 for this program. We currently have more than 80 out of 300 applicants participating in the program, which will end October 1 of this year. Unfortunately, many of our applicants are unable to pay the $50 filing fee required by the court, in addition to the $45 opt-in fee as required by this program upfront. Individuals who wish to participate in the pilot but cannot afford to pay the $45 must complete an affidavit of indigency to be determined eligible for these funds by the court. Individuals must also complete the notification of expedited record update service program form, which is available through the Expungement Sealing Department of the Clerk's Office on the second floor of our building. The Franklin County Self-Help Center can provide assistance to those who are income-qualified, and the center is located on the sixth floor of 375 South High Street. I'm so grateful and pleased to partner with Councilmember Page, the Franklin County Self-Help Center, to provide this very resourceful assistance to those who need it most. Thank you, city council members, for supporting this initiative. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Clerk Tyack. Councilmember Mitchell Brown?
Ms. Tyack, would you please give folks just a clear, a little better understanding about the value of having your record expunged, for folks to understand why there's value in having that take place?
Well, the value of having a record expunged, whether it is a conviction or a dismissal, is if someone was to apply for employment with a company, and they do a background check on that individual, once they determine they'd like to make the offer to employ them, depending on what the background check report reflects, whether it's just traffic violations or more serious felony convictions, that employer may choose not to employ those individuals. In addition, whenever someone applies for housing, if they have a bad background check, in addition to a credit report, that's pretty much nixes their ability to rent affordable housing. So, it is a snowball effect that, once someone has a background check record that is unacceptable in some situations, it really prevents them from moving forward in their lives and becoming employable.
Are there any additional questions? President Protem Stenziano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No question, just want to thank the clerk in your office for all you guys do day in, day out. I know when I went through and saw the files, and files, and files, just how committed you and the staff are to finding innovative approaches so that residents can not only interact with the office, but not have that be a stress, and really be out in the community and bettering their lives. So, just wanted to thank you for your ongoing leadership, innovation, and your staff's work in support of those goals.
Thank you.
President Harden?
I just wanted to thank you both, Chair and Madam Clerk. This is the type of partnership that works for our community, and works for a segment of our community that has been left behind, and sometimes is not given the second chance that they need and deserve, and that actually makes our community safer and solves issues like affordable housing. So, I really do appreciate both of you, and both of you came and talked to all of us independently about this issue when this opportunity came, and so I appreciate this pilot, and hopefully we can see where it goes from here and how we can continue to support it. But, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Harden. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. I was just going to say, I could say ditto. I mean, seriously, just to thank the two of you for working together, and this is really important, and I think that's why Councilmember Brown brought this up, that it is, has the ability to change people's lives. And so, this, you know, $9,000, which, you know, you think about the budget that we have in city of Columbus, but a $9,000 pilot program has the ability to do, again, not only change an individual's lives, but also their family's lives. So, I thank you guys for coming up with this great innovative idea, and look forward to the results and how we continue to move forward with something like this. So, thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and I do have one more question for you, Clerk Tyack. Could you just expound on this program and the different resources that is able to kind of scrub or clean this information from than the traditional expungement process?
Well, the traditional expungement process, we as clerks of court are responsible for reporting a case conviction or a dismissal to the Bureau of Identification at the state level. And so, many of the companies have online access. You know, you've seen, you know, research someone's background, do a background check record, you know, costs $11 or whatever. They are not being notified by the clerk or the court. They're not required to be notified to modify their system to reflect that expungement. So, in other words, it would take that conviction or the dismissal off of their record so that it would no longer be public record. So, those are the two different options, BCI, which is the State Background Check Company, and these 600 background check companies that operate through online publications and databases. So, it provides people that opt into the program an opportunity to have both services.
Thank you so much, Clerk Tyack, and again, just thank you for bringing this problem to the attention of council, and really being passionate and compassionate of those individuals who are coming to the court, who $45, you know, they have to save up just for the $50 to apply for the expungement. So, thank you just for your advocacy for, again, those indigent individuals who deserve a second chance.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all we have in Judiciary and Court Administration this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. President Protem Stenziano chairs that committee. President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, in Public Utilities, bring forward three ordinances. The first ordinance 0910-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Shook Construction Company for the Dublin Road Water Plant UV Disinfection Facility Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $23,766,932.20 from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $23,766,932.20 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund for the Division of Water. As we can all appreciate, water quality throughout the city is essential to human health and economic growth and development. This project will construct an ultraviolet disinfection facility at the Dublin Road Water Plant that will improve public health by disabling chlorine-resistant microorganisms and other harmful pathogens, which will lead to cleaner and safer drinking water. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, ordinance 0948-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase an existing construction administration and construction inspection services agreement with CTL Engineering for the Brimfield Area Sanitary Sewer Repair Project, Roof Redirection Clintonville 1 Weishheimer Indian Springs Project, and the Lateral Linings Clintonville 1 Weishheimer Indian Springs Project, to authorize the transfer within of $1,274,177.88, and the expenditure of up to $1,472,807.13 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund. These projects will include rehabilitation and repairs to existing sewers, construction of newer sewers, and construction of green infrastructure in the Weishheimer and Indian Springs Project in Clintonville. The majority of the projects will reduce inflow and infiltration of the city's sanitary sewer system, thus mitigating sanitary sewer overflows to basements and waterways. Other projects provide improvement to existing storm infrastructure to mitigate drainage and flooding issues. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
The last ordinance is ordinance 1032-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with Blossar Capital Limited for the Big Run Hell Branch Sanitary Sewer Extension Project pursuant to Section 186 of the Columbus City Charter for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize the transfer within of $1,688,291.14 in the expenditure. of $1,688,291.14 and the expenditure of up to $1,749,070.14 from the Sanitary Sewer Obligation Bond Fund. President Harden, at the request of the Department, I'm going to move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled.
That's all we have in Public Utilities this evening.
Thank you, Chair Sinziano. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs this committee.
Thank you. I have ordinance, the first ordinance, 0794-2018, is to authorize and direct the city auditor to provide the transfer of $170,000 within the Health Department Grants Fund, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with various vendors for the Ryan White Part A program, for the provision of outpatient ambulatory care, non-medical case management, medical case management, mental health services, housing services, and emergency financial assistance for persons living with HIV or AIDS in Delaware, Fairfield, Franklin, Leaking, Madison, Morrell, Pickaway, and Union Counties, and to authorize expenditure of $3,273,468 from the Health Department Grants Fund, and to pay the cost thereof, and to declare an emergency. The HIV care Part A grants' purpose is to improve access to medical care for persons living with HIV or AIDS within Central Ohio. In 2017, the Ryan White Part A program for the Central Ohio area served over 2,400 people living with HIV or AIDS through several programs, including outpatient ambulatory, medical care, mental health services, medical case management, early intervention services, housing services, non-medical case management, emergency financial assistance, and medical transportation. I have one speaker on this legislation, and it is Mr. David Baker. He is against this ordinance. Mr. Baker, good evening.
Good evening.
Please show your name, and you have three minutes to share your comments regarding this legislation.
Good. Thank you. My name is Dave Baker. Good evening, President Harden and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to speak on ordinance number 0794-2018. I'm a 28-year survivor of HIV/AIDS. I have been an advocate for the past 10 years and have served on many committees for both the state and local health departments. Currently, I'm a voting member for the Ryan White Party Planning Council, appointed by the mayor. As an appointed voting member, I believe that I have an obligation to bring concerns regarding the council to the mayor and this body. A few months ago, HERSA had completed a compliance site visit at Columbus Public Health. During that visit, HERSA had held a consumer service recipient roundtable to gather feedback on services, levels, and service quality. I attended this roundtable. After HERSA had released their site visit findings, of which had contained some serious grant compliance issues, Columbus Public Health Part A Management had proposed to change council bylaws in order to attempt to comply with some of the report's severe adverse findings. Some of the change is to the bylaws include changing from format from a planning council to a planning body. This change appears to shift power away from the community voting members and concentrate the power to the vendors of the $5 million grant. Those powers include resource allocations, as well as rigging the voting system and properly match to actual needs. This also raises many ethical and conflict of interest issues. Number two, Columbus Public Health Grant Management proposed changes would ingrain a member of conflict of interest issues into real rules. Planning councils establish, planning councils establishes standards of care, where planning bodies only advise the standard of care. Planning council directs priorities and resolution allocations. Planning bodies only advise on priorities of resources. Many of the following, many of the findings are the result of poor management, and now changes are being proposed to cover their tracks. Another issue that should be brought to your attention and review is that it should also be noted that Southeast, a sub-grantee agency who had run the program for people living with HIV and AIDS, short-term financial assistance and housing, had their grant money put on pause by management of the Columbus Public Health because of poor or lack of proper oversight by Columbus Public Health. Untold financial damage was inflicted upon the program, and Columbus Public Health had to immediately re-award the contract to Equitas Health in order to prevent client evictions. As of this date, the Part A council has not been given a full detailed report of the thousands of dollars of damage to the program and whether the city or Southeast will cover the misspent funds or not. That money needs to be replaced and not on the backs of Central Ohio HIV community. How is Columbus Public Health reporting this loss of funds? Another big issue with this program that was also brought up by HERSA was the lack of transparency in all aspects of the program. We do not even know whose salaries are associated and whose we as members are responsible. To demonstrate, could I have at least 30 more seconds, please? Please. Thank you. To demonstrate this point, I had a pending request for information for the past six months regarding the transfer to the Ryan White Part A program from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of $95,000. Neither entity appears to have documentation for the sizable transfer of the paper trail. I and other community firmly believe that the entire program should be audited with outside auditors. In terms of the proposed ordinance, there is a lack of detailed transparency for the $170,000 transfer to the balance of the grant. This is my very last paragraph here. In addition, at one of our recent meetings regarding the bylaws, Columbus Public Health Grant Management was asked about those changes because the mayor signs off on the grant with the federal government and appoints the voting members. Columbus Public Health response was, "The mayor and council rubber stamp on what we decide." These are all some expensive rubber stamps. Therefore, considering the issue that I have just brought before this body, I urge this body and the mayor to table this ordinance until these issues have been addressed. Thank you for your time and concerns, and I'm open for any questions, and thank you for the extended time.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, for coming down. So, certainly, this was just brought to my attention today, and so I will first ask Nancy Bechtel to, she knows these concerns, and to maybe address these issues.
Yeah. Thank you, President Harden, President Potem Sinziano, Councilwoman Tyson. We have worked with Mr. Baker in the past. He is a member of a coalition that we run, the Central Ohio HIV Planning Alliance, and some of the changes he's talking about are being discussed at the committee. They're on the May 22 agenda for voting, as far as how appointments go and stuff. It's nothing that Columbus Public Health is doing ourselves, it's something for the committee to decide. I can't really speak to some of what Mr. Baker's talking about as far as poor management of our grant. We are funded by HERSA and through the Ohio Department of Health, and we have passed site audits without issue, so I can't speak to that. I can certainly take it back to my team, we can certainly follow up, but the work that our Ryan White program does attempts to be as transparent as possible. As you know, all our records are public, all our finances are public. Whenever we have public records requests, we release the information. So, no one's trying to do anything subversive here or get something over on any person. The committees run openly, and as I said, the May 22 meeting, as I understand it, has on the agenda some of the changes around appointments and stuff. The committee has moved forward for some of those changes in appointments to make the committee more nimble. That's all.
Well, Nancy, I would just ask that, based upon some of the concerns that he has in his comments, he's just given us a copy of it, that if you would make sure that the issues that have been brought up today, that someone, either yourself, Dr. Mashika Roberts, could certainly respond back to me in regards to his testimony.
Councilwoman Sinziano, I mean, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Tyson, can I just take 30 seconds to respond to what Nancy said, please?
Okay, that's what we'll do.
I'm sorry.
So, there's two things. So, I've asked her, because I now have a document, and so any of the issues and concerns that we have, what we can do is I'm going to ask her to provide us some information. We can also have someone from my team reach out to you, so that we can continue to follow up on this. The other, Mr. Baker, I know that you've also asked that we don't, we would not to pass this legislation this evening, and I will share this, that we will, we will work to figure out what any issues and concerns are, but what I don't want to do is not provide the funding to the organizations, so that individuals who need those services don't get them, as you referred to in your memo about just, you know, Southeast. So, I would like to still pass the legislation, but absolutely, I will make sure that we continue to have conversations with you and with, and with public health.
I agree 100%. I just kind of put the table out there to kind of get your attention, but I agree, this is an emergency, immediately, a need that needs to be done right now, but I just thank you, Madam Tyson, for allowing me to, you know, talk to you, and you're going to put me in a connection with the people that I need to speak with.
And thank you, and in the future, if you have some issues, you know, you don't have to wait to council if it comes to legislation, you can feel free to contact not only my office, but any council member's office to be able to share any thoughts or concerns. Councilmember Sinziano.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Baker has done that numerous times. I know he's worked closely with the department, and so I think we talked a little bit, and I think just because it was on the agenda, he thought it was the appropriate time to share with everyone. He's been a very strong advocate. I've known him from my State House days, good father, and really passionate about this funding, not only within the city, but across the state of Ohio.
Thank you. And these dollars will go to the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, Equitas Health, the Research Institute at Nationwide Children's Hospital, the Ohio State University Department of Internal Medicine, and the Ohio State University Hospital. And if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And the final ordinance I have in my committee this evening is ordinance number 0916-2018, is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency in the amount of $200,000 for the Water Pollution Control Grant Program, and to begin efforts to identify and replace or repair failing septic systems within the city of Columbus, and to authorize the appropriation of $200,000 from the unappropriate balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This program was created to assist residents of Ohio with repair replacement of, again, the failing septic systems in hopes to improve the overall water quality in the state. The program is providing financial assistance to low to moderate-income homeowners with repair or replacement of failing systems. Columbus Public Health will solicit and identify local homeowners in Columbus that meet the income eligibility criteria outlined in the program. And again, if there's any questions about the program, they can, again, contact Columbus Public Health to gather the information about this program. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I would just like to thank you for your leadership in offering this ordinance this evening. In my past days as an Assistant City Attorney, I know how important this loan money is for property owners, specifically those in our aging community who don't have the funds available to take care of their septic system. So, thank you again for your leadership and for your work on this.
If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. It's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. The final committee to come before council is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair this committee and all members sit on it. We have ordinance 1131-2018, to amend Chapter 362 of the Columbus City Codes by implementing modifications mandated by changes enacted by the Ohio General Assembly relating to the administration and collection of municipal net profit tax by the Ohio Department of Taxation, if so elected by the taxpayer, and to declare an emergency. I'm going to turn the floor over to our auditor, Auditor Pilgore.
Certainly, thank you. Council President Harden, members of council, you may remember some memos that I submitted to you in February and in March pertaining to the state's changes to the municipal income tax provisions related to municipal net profits taxes. Represents about 13% of the types of taxes that we do collect. In the state's omnibus budget bill, House Bill 49, they made some sweeping changes to the way that we allow for the collection of those municipal net profits taxes. As such, in order to get our code language in concert with that of the state's, we need to make some provisional adjustments, or, excuse me, adjustments to the provisions here in our language, and that is what you see before you. As a reminder to all, we are still pursuing this legally, and I believe the language thanks to the city attorney's office is broad and encompasses that in the event that there is a judicial ruling that is favorable to the city of Columbus, that we will be able to morph quickly and without additional council action.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Are there any additional questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And the next piece of legislation, I'm going to turn the committee over to Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening, I have ordinance 1042-2018, to amend Section 4114.505 of the Columbus Building Code by augmenting the qualifications of an applicant for any home improvement license classification, to include an Ohio-registered design professional that is experienced in residential design and construction. In a recent evaluation of the current home improvement contractor's license requirements, together with the necessity to maintain relevancy with current building industry standards, the Department of Building and Zoning Services has determined that the Columbus Building Code should be revised to provide that all registered design professionals with experience in the home improvement construction industry shall be deemed to have equally acceptable credentials for licensure. A public hearing was held before the Board of Review of General and Home Improvement Contractors on March 7 of this year, and the Columbus Building Commission on March 20, whereupon the Board of Review of General and Home Improvement Contractors and the Columbus Building Commission voted to recommend this proposed change be forwarded to this council for adoption. Are there any additional comments from the department? Seeing none, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden.
That is all we have in the Rules and Reference Committee. It is now 6:29, and so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This meeting is adjourned. We're going to take a short break, and then we will come back for a zoning committee, and we'll do speakers after zoning. Regular meeting number 26 will now come to order. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs this committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden, and if there, before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. With the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak, either for or against a council variance, including staff, please stand. Thank you. Raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 0793-2018. It is to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.037R2F Residential District, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3321.01A Dumpster Area, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and 3332.27 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Code for the property located at 1179 Yeager Street, to permit up to 1,900 square feet of limited commercial uses and 550 square feet of outdoor dining space with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is entitled to a written petition to the city attorney's office demanding The applicant is Mark Oars. The proposed use is a lim, is a limited commercial uses. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Area Commission's recommendation is approval. It was 13 to, to one. First, I want to move to wave second reading. Before I do that, I think this one has, I'm sorry. Before I do that, I have a speaker slip on this one, I'm sorry. So with that, I'm going to ask the speaker to come up and certainly share, Mr. Jonathan, is it Waley, Wiley? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, councilmembers. My name's Jonathan Wally. I live on Mitoff Street, about two doors down from the property in question. I've lived there for 12 years. I'm speaking against this proposal. I'll focus on claims and the proposal statement of hardship, two in particular. One from the statement of hardship is, quote, "Typical of the commercial mixed-use nature of this neighborhood, there are many businesses with limited or no on-site parking," unquote. Calling this a mixed-use neighborhood is utterly misleading. It may be the ambition of some people to turn the neighborhood into a mixed-use commercial zone, but it is not one. It has long been an overwhelmingly residential neighborhood with a small number of local businesses which have been there for decades. It is zoned R2F. The authors of this proposal characterize the neighborhood in a manner that suits their interests but does not reflect the reality of the area. On that note, in the last year alone, six new businesses have opened at the intersection of Jaeger Street and Thurman Avenue, none of which have parking. This sudden growth of business is not at all typical of this neighborhood, but a change to its character made by a small number of people in a very short period of time with practically no consultation with the neighborhood's residents. This change has also occurred with no discussion of traffic safety or parking issues. The statement of hardship in this proposal also claims, quote, "Parking for residents is readily available and accessed from the rear of their premises," unquote. This statement is patently false. Dozens of residents in the immediate area do not have any off-street parking at all. Many others have only single off-street parking spaces despite being two-car households. To call resident parking readily available is simply false and self-serving. German Village Commission records reveal that in the last two years, the city has given away 105 parking spaces at the intersection of Thurman and Jaeger by granting parking variances. This proposal would bring that total to 135 spaces. That's a rapid proliferation of new businesses in a residentially zoned neighborhood with no parking for customers except street parking. Having lived on Mitoff Street for 12 years, I can attest to the markedly increased density of traffic and parked cars around this intersection in the last year, and I ask the council whether anyone knows how many street parking spaces are left to give away in the area, taking into account such factors as the number of residences, no parking zones, and the R2F requirements for street parking per residence. According to the South Side Plan, quote, "Support for rezoning or variance requests for retail uses should only be given when evidence is provided that the development would have minimal negative impact on the surrounding residential area," unquote. I'm not saying that it would necessarily have these negative impacts, but given what I see in this proposal, I don't believe that this has been the case, that this deliberation has been done with those things in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Pine, do you want to make any comments on first, on this application?
This went through the normal review channels of going through our staff review wherein our Public Service Department reviewed the parking variance, and I will let Mr. Blatchmott speak to that. But it is, it was an auto body repair shop, or an auto repair facility. The property was most likely rendered non-conforming in the 2005 area-wide rezoning of this neighborhood. Most likely, it was, very commonly, in these older neighborhoods, the corners of the properties would be zoned commercial so that they would serve the neighborhood commercial, historic neighborhood commercial uses in these urban neighborhoods. The applicant worked with Planning Division on, right now, the, the entire lot is 100% pavement. They are putting in some landscaping and some screening to buffer the use from the adjacent residential. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for full approval, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
And I guess to address more specifically the parking question that was reviewed by the Department of Public Service, we do understand the potential for additional parking demand in this area, but there are a couple pieces of this that are mitigating factors. One is the small amount of square footage that will actually be devoted to this restaurant. It would, it appeared unlikely that this would be a, you know, primary destination restaurant or, or type of use like that. This, this site will be closing off driveways that were present with the auto body shop. That will add a few additional on-street parking spaces that will be available for anyone who wishes to park in the street there. And as, as part of our, our review, we did request that the applicant pursue or at least investigate the ability to obtain any kind of off-site parking area, and I believe the applicant had attempted that, but I believe that was unsuccessful, so perhaps the applicant could provide additional information related to that endeavor. Thank you.
Is Mr. Oars here?
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, can you make just one, share with us the concern that, about parking in this area? And as Dan just mentioned, that you had tried to find off-site parking. So could you just give us some, share with the viewing and listening audience and my council colleagues information regarding the parking situation, and any other comments you want to make based upon the, the comments from Mr. Wally?
Great, thank you. Members of council, this particular property is a commercial property at an intersection in this part of the South Side. It is very close to German Village. It is very close to other commercial development. It is two parcels from being within German Village, which takes it to South Side Area Commission Review instead of German Village Commission Review. The property in question has been a commercial property its entire life. It has been an auto body repair shop, so we feel like the commercial entity has already existed there. That's what really precipitated the need for the variances here. The parking question really, for us, comes down to the fact that this, this property faces Jaeger Street. Understanding that Mitoff and all of the other east-west oriented streets do have residences, there are very few residences that face Jaeger Street. If you really study the urban development pattern of that block, this property faces Jaeger. Most of the street parking on Jaeger is available during different times of the day. At this time, there's no proprietor for this particular restaurant. We're still exploring whether or not there are options in the neighborhood to lease parking. There are very few other commercial lots that would be available, so we've had no success yet to date. But if we do get a proprietor and they do feel like they need that to survive in the neighborhood with, without street parking being available, then I, I suspect that that will become part of the business model for those people to seek out an ability to find places for patrons to park. I know it's the property owner's desire that this property be neighborhood oriented and that it be welcoming to the neighbors and not find a way to impede their ability to park in front of their own homes or become a nuisance property. So we, we certainly understand, and we understand that it's a delicate balance in these mixed-use areas.
Is there a representative from the Area Commission here from the South Side Area Any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we don't have a representative, but can someone remind me the vote of the Area Commission?
13 to 1.
And curious to the first speaker, did you, have you shared these concerns with the Area Commission before, or just because you got the notice, that's why this was the first time it?
I've heard about it before, the Marion Village meeting, but this, I read that the proposal required to that meeting, and some of those concerns were voiced at that meeting, but other than that, I've not expressed this.
And, and the only reason I ask is, you know, to make reference to how many variances we've approved. I think everyone has always had, every variance we've approved was with full support of the Area Commission. And so looking to those neighborhood leaders and would encourage, if this is an ongoing concern, to engage them either through Marion Village Society, or Civic, or any other representatives on the South Side Area Commission, because that's where these questions should come up, and then that's who we're going to look, or I at least, look to for guidance on the concerns you raised.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Stenziano. And so again, Mr. Oars, you don't have yet a restaurateur for this, for this building, and should there become an issue, hopefully there's not because of how Jaeger Street, as you just mentioned, the way that Ye, this building is facing Jaeger Street, that that would not be an issue. But should there become that, I would suggest you work with your community to ensure that it is not a parking issue, even though it's not one today, but hopefully that will not be in the future. And so with that, again, this was the Area Commission support this, this ordinance from 13 to 1, and I would ask my colleagues for their support and move for passage of this ordinance. Move, first I need to move to wave second reading, I'm sorry. Move to wave second reading, and now move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And now move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance, 1147-2018, is to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.02 AR12, ARLD, and AR1 Apartment Residential District Use, 3309.14 Heights, Height Districts, 3312.21 A2D1 Landscaping and Screening, 3312.273 Parking Setback Line, 331249 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3312.53B Minimum Number of, Minimum Number of Loading Spaces Required, 3321.05 A1B1 and B2 Vision Clearance, 3321.07B Landscaping, 3333.09 Area Requirements, 3333.11 ARLD Area District, Area District Requirements, 3333.15.15C Basis of Computing Area, 3333.18D Building Lines, 3333.22 Maximum Side Yard Required, 3333.23 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and 3333.24 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1117 Oak Street to allow a mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the ARLD Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Goliath Zada Development LLC. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation was 10, 1, and 1. And I have a speaker slip, but that is for this legislation. But because it is the Area Commissioner who wants to speak, Ms. Kathleen Bailey wants to speak on this legislation, correct? Okay. And so with that, I will ask Ms. Kathleen Bailey to come to the podium. We don't have to have a presentation. You can just, come on, now you can come up and speak. You want to. Good evening, Commissioner Bailey.
Good evening, members of, councilmembers. I put in a slip. I wasn't quite sure if, being here representing the commission, I needed one, but I, so I wanted to be safe, and I put one in. Okay. Number one, very briefly, we're very happy about this. This is an area that has been pretty desolate for years, and the, the proponents of this process, this particular project, this is part of a larger, several projects that they're doing in the area. So we think they're doing a fantastic job of a comprehensive approach to this. There are two things in the Near East Area Plan that they looked at. Number one, where possible, we ask that if there's a historically significant building, that it be preserved. And also, when it comes to the parking requirement, that they look at how much on-street parking is involved, because we like to use the on-street parking to help fulfill the minimum parking requirement, of which they've done both. There's a, a building over there, and the title of it escapes me right now, but anyway, the entire design of the project is around that, around that building. It's not historic in the sense of being Victorian, but I believe the, the research that was done, I believe it was financed by Bob Hope. So I guess that makes it historic. But anyway, what we like, the fact is they, they kept that building, and they actually built the, the design around it, so we're, we're going to keep that. I walk that area all the time. I can tell you, there's plenty of on-street parking. We're excited about it. And again, they're augmenting this with other development that they're bringing to the neighborhood. We are looking for density. People for years have said they want to see shops and, and they want things to come, and I've al, and I've said this over and over again, if you don't have people, you don't have commercial. So they are, they are helping us bring in the density with some very beautiful designs, and this is just one part of the, some other projects that they're doing. But again, we're very happy with it, and we're looking forward when they start construction.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. So I'd like to move to wave second reading.
Second.
Please call the roll. Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance, 1153-2018, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.029, SR Suburban Residential District of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 3330 Scottwood Road to permit a non-acessory child daycare facility in the SR Suburban Residential District. The applicant is Catherine Odom. The proposed use is a non-acessory child daycare center within a religious facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Berwyn East Civic Association's recommendation is approval, and that approval was 31 to 0. And so with that, I'd like to move to wave second reading.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance, 1165-2018, to rezone 879 East Long Street, being .28 acres, located at the southeast corner of East Long Street and Australia Alley, from R2F Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Timothy Lay. The proposed use is a mixed-use commercial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, and that is 11 to 0. And Ms. Bailey, do you want to come back and speak on this ordinance also?
This is another triumph in that 879 East Long Street, if I have the correct, if I have the right property, was the Edna?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's the Edna. And you want to stand up, Commissioner Brown? Mr. Brown and Commissioner Mesner have led a longstanding advocacy to save this building. This is extremely important to us. We've lost so much property on Long Street, and to be able to save this building, to repurpose it and have it redone is just absolutely fantastic. So we're happy about it. That's all I can say. I just want to make sure you understand, this is the end of a very long struggle, and we're just very happy that we were able to save this building and to continue the legacy. And we're asking all the developers, when they do things like this, to please give us the plaque with the history of the building, so that when we start our walking tours, we can show everybody what, how, how the building was. So we're just very, very happy with this, established by, built by African-Americans, and the gentlemen were naming the buildings after their wives, so we're very, very happy that we're saving, not only getting a nice project, but we're saving a very, very close part of our, our history on the street, so that it, it's more than just, it goes beyond just buildings. It's- It's really a spirit of neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey, for your advocacy, and Commissioner Brown. And so I want, Councilmember Brown. Commissioner Bailey.
Just a question. There's a reference to, that's all right, just to provide some additional clarity. In the document, it acknowledges that a restaurant and offices in this building. Do you have a potential tenant already, or someone, had a conversation with someone about this?
Uh, I think they're, I think they're just preparing the building for, I think they're, I think they're kind of think, I mean, the usage of terms.
Yes.
Yeah, I think they're even looking at using it as an incubator.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Director Shoney, do you want to make some comments? Please, you got to come up and speak into the mic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To President Pro Tem's question, I will not be dancing. This is a property that we had in the land bank. This is the Edna building, and Commissioner Bailey was correct. It will be, have some incubator space, some office space, as well as hopefully a cafe. So we're really excited about this one. This is one we've been working on for a long time, and I do want to thank the commissioners for their help. They've been great advocates, not only for the neighborhood, but this street and this building in particular, so, thanks.
Thank you. And so first, I want to move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. I'd like to move to amend, ask the bed to the clerk.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I want to move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number eleven eighty-four dash two thousand and eighteen to grant a variance from the provisions of sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three nine R four residential district, thirty-three twenty-one point oh five B two vision clearance, thirty-three twenty-five point seven oh five AE supplemental parking requirements thirty-three twenty-five point eight oh one maximum lot coverage thirty-three twenty-five eight oh five maximum floor area ratio thirty-three twenty-five point eight oh nine landscaped area and treatment thirty-three thirty-two point fifteen R four area district requirements thirty-three thirty-two point twenty-one building lines thirty-three thirty-two twenty-two A one building lines on corner lots exceptions thirty-three thirty-two point twenty-five maximum side yards required thirty-three thirty-two point two six C three minimum side yard permitted thirty-three thirty-two point twenty-seven rear yard and thirty-three thirty-two point twenty-eight side or rear yard obstruction of the Columbus City Code for the property located at thirteen thirty, thirteen thirty-four Neil Avenue to permit a building, a building containing a four-unit dwelling and three thousand seven hundred and eight square feet coffee shop with three hundred and thirty square foot accessory patio and a separate two-unit dwelling on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R four residential district. The applicant is Hank Holdings LTD. The proposed use is, is a mixed-use development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the University Area Commission's recommendation is approval fifteen to zero. I want to move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all the legislation I have in this meeting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Tyson. That's all we have in zoning this evening, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We stand adjourned. We will now take speakers this evening.